Talked with Eagle, both Michael Size and Luke Trumble about several different options. I feel that we have a viable option that Eagle will let us be able to push through as repair and maintenance to simplify the process and be able to get it done before spring.
Sweet.
So my, what I would like is to have a couple commissioners meet with Eagle with me and we talk through the whole process, look at the video, look at the damage and hopefully be able to come up with a solution relatively quick.
I would be more than happy to assist you on that.
Okay.
I can also, I have some questions also.
Yeah.
In the email that you sent us last week, you said in preparing for the Holton Lake winter drought on, you noticed a plate in front of the dam. And you sent us quite a bit of information on that, that basically it's illegal.
Yeah, I sent you every permit that I could find here at the county and what Eagle had permit wise, yeah.
I'm going to discuss this in our regular meeting, but I think, I think we got a serious problem. Five foot by nineteen foot steel plate is a huge problem. One of our commissioners was recently brought on trial for a six inch by fifty seven inch board. This is over forty times that size. I think we've got a lot of discussing to do on this and what, on how this happened and is there illegally outside of the permit? And I've done a little bit of research on it. We're going to get into that more in depth, but I'm mystified as how this could have happened.
I may say that right now that hasn't bearing on moving forward with this.
That's right.
I apologize.
That really doesn't have bearing on moving forward with this though.
The other, other information, okay. We'll talk about that in our regular meeting and that's one of the subject matters in our regular meeting.
Yeah, I can touch base on Higgins Lake as well. I believe all you, everyone received the survey that was done on Higgins Lake. The concerning, the concerning thing there, and again, I talked that over with, I believe, both Michael Size and Trumble was that no sheep pile was found. Kind opening, uncontrolled opening, so there's no kind of restricting factor there. And again, that's something that just to bring to your guys' attention.
I have some, I have some questions on that too. I'm seeing from the material that I, uh, I took a look at the, at the elevations that your survey crew did.
Yeah, I mean, the, the survey crew that the land conservancy hired, yeah.
Right. And it, it looked like there was quite a bit of discrepancy back in, back in March of this year, there was a report in the Holton Lake Resort regarding the scouring at the bottom of the Higgins Lake. And the title of it is Russo told no scouring in Higgins. And I'm going to read from it. It says Rasmussen told Russo that while he was conducting his investigation, he did not notice any scouring at the LLCS. Russo then asked Rasmussen if the county should pull a permit to repair the Higgins Lake LLCS. And he was told there was not a reason to do so. Then later in the article says, in response, Ostrigan said that a 2010 Spicer report stated that there was scouring and most recently, Scott Enron, or I mean Soil Erosion, sorry about that, it's very light. Soil Erosion Officer Chase Semke found scouring like Ostrigan had seen, as did Commissioner Rex Wolfson. However, Ostrigan said Eagle did not see the scouring. He said he'd like to see a report from Eagle about the LLCS and requested permit change because the lake levels are going to drop in the summer months, which of course they did this summer. Later in the article said, Wilson said, maybe scouring was the wrong word. Was it the wrong word? However, it's evident that the fine material in the stream bed has washed away, which lowers the stream bed. He said this can only see, you seen from a standing on top of the LLCS, said Chipkey. Took a measurement and found that there was a drop. Now, I took the elevations that you had on your, on, on the report. And I'm assuming that the original top of the footing is the bottom of the stream bed. Is that, is that correct? In other words, the bottom of the stream bed should be at the top of the footing?
I know anything else. That's what I would assume as well.
Okay. And it looks like the westernmost spillway, there's five shots that were taken through the spillway that are on this report that you sent us. It is nine point eight four inches low in one spot. It is eleven point eight eight inches low in another spot. It is thirteen point five six inches low at another spot. It is twelve inches low at another spot and eight point two eight inches. I'd say that's a tremendous amount of scouring. And it looks like there's a lot of water leaving the lake because of that. And that is just in one point in, in the stream bed. I, I think we got a problem with scouring. We're, we're not being given the right details by our folks at Eagle. They're saying there's no scouring. According to the engineering report that you provided us, there's a lot of scouring.
Well, that's why originally when you asked to just survey and it tells you everything you need.
Right. So, so the guys.
You can't see everything underwater.
Right. It looks like the guys from Eagle aren't, aren't very up to date on it. So that's, that's all I got to say on that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chase?
Yeah, on the Holton Lake issue, my suggestion is we move forward where you're.
Yeah, I would like to at least see.
In the meantime, somebody on the board is going to have to check and make sure if this can be put on the SAD as maintenance or if this has to go through public hearing type thing. I mean, somebody, as a board, we're going to have to figure that one out.
Yeah, absolutely. But at least there's the steps now to a solution that I think can be done relatively quickly.
Sounds good. Thank you, Chase. Anything else for Chase? Okay, number two. Holton Lake Level Control Structure Steel Plate Discussion of the Hole. I was asked to put that on.
You know, we're, the sixtieth anniversary of the entity assassination, assassination today. They found a magic bullet and they keep talking about this magic bullet. I want to know about this magic steel plate that all of a sudden appeared in the dam that was supposed to be removed a year and a half ago. That's the steel plate. So, so I, I, I would like to talk a little bit about that. How did the, how did this happen? I'm going to talk about it later on in our regular meeting, but.
Well, for it to talk about, we're going to talk about it here. We don't need to talk about it twice.
It's, well, it's, it's also scheduled in the regular meeting. It's one of our agenda items.
But we can do it both in one shot.
No, I don't want to do them both in one shot. I want the public is going to be coming to our regular meeting. We need to discuss it now. So we're, we're going to do that because that's scheduled as part of the agenda item. But, but how about this magic steel plate? Where did this come from?
I don't think that's on our agenda.
No, it's not.
I don't, you know, I.
Says here in the work session, Holton Lake Level Control Structure Steel Plates Discussion of the Hole.
That's now.
Right, right.
But it's not in our meeting.
I asked it to be in the, in the regular meeting.
I put it right here.
In the work session.
Yeah.
The regular meeting though.
Oh, well, okay. Well, then I've got, I've got some comment, I've got some comments I.
Where would you prefer it be, Mr. Ostrigan? What meeting?
I'd prefer it to be in the regular meeting, but if you want to go over.
You requested it to be in the regular meeting?
I apologize.
You made a request for it to be in the regular.
Yes, I did last.
Okay, then let's strike it on here.
Okay, we'll talk about it in the regular meeting. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Review of 2024 General Appropriations Act, Jody Valentino.
Good morning. So I have provided each of you a few documents. I had emailed out the budget and told you that I would be printing. I appreciate Commissioner Sensor letting me know that she didn't need that. The Uniform Accounting and Budgeting Act, Michigan Public Act 621 of 1978 is what governs the administrative processes for all local governments and the state units in order to establish and pass a budget. As a part of this, the Municipal Budget Act states that it must be passed through what is called a General Appropriations Act. The General Appropriations Act follows the statute where it lines out exactly where the money is going. That's been approved by the Board of Commissioners or whomever the legislative body is for whatever unit of government is. Additionally, it lines out certain sections of the process of approval, i.e. chief administrator and/or fiscal officer presents the budget. It's reviewed by the legislative body. Legislative body makes changes. What the legislative body chooses based on expenditure amounts recommended and requested by other portions of the government and elected officials to ensure that they can conduct their business. That must be outlined in both the expenses and revenue line items by fund. The reason it's so long is you also have to have in there the fact that these are not, this isn't an open checkbook, i.e. so therefore, for instance, just because a department receives a budget of $150,000 doesn't mean that they can spend $150,000 however they so choose. It must be included within the budget that's approved. It does allow for line item transfers, meaning that if someone budgeted for new computer software and they were able to save $1,000 from computer software, they would have the ability to buy a new computer as well because they were authorized a total certain amount for their budget of that. So that's the general gist of what's in there. It lets the different entities and expenditure departments know that there are violations as far as spending more than has been approved by the budget. So, and the processes for approving, approval for any additional monies, all of which I know you guys were concerned with. So I wanted to provide that with you at this meeting so that you would have time to review it, read it and ask questions because this is the document that'll be utilized for you to pass a 2024 budget.
It's not coming down today, though?
No, sir. You didn't have time.
It'll be the first meeting in December, correct?
Yes.
Any questions regarding that for Jody? Okay, number four, hiring freeze, discussion of the hole.
So that was one of the things that we talked about at our last meeting. And I think it was, it's not necessarily, how do I want to put it? That if it's in their budget, obviously, then they do have the right already to hire and do those things. But I think that the board needs to be a little bit more aware or would like to be aware of when we have new employees and things like that, I guess, is what we're trying to.
So in speaking to the, the two departments that have open positions that are harder to fill, budgeted open positions, we had this discussion and essentially what the thought was, obviously, you're approving a budget with X amount of positions in it for each department, each fund. Under Sheriff actually contacted me last night because they have five current open deputy positions and they have the opportunity to bring somebody on board. And I said, great, I think what the board is looking for, I said, and we will find out today when you have this discussion, is acknowledgement that they have a candidate for one of those five open positions that they will be extending an offer to, and this is whom the candidate is. The only time there may be a caveat with that is if they are extending an offer and don't want to name the person because perhaps that person hasn't told their sheriff or their nine one one operator director yet. But to allow the board that opportunity to be aware of the hiring and the candidate that they are offering to. So you don't get caught in Walmart with somebody saying, hey, your neighbor just got hired and to corrections. Do you know anything about that? So, because that was kind of the, the tenor that I got from those of you that did speak to me about this. And I think that that's workable. Sheriff's nodding, under sheriff's.
So the five positions are in our budget already, I'm hoping.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But I think this goes a little beyond that. It's like, you know, we don't know what's going to come down the line. We may need find, all of a sudden, we need an employee to cover something that's mandated to us. That needs to come to the board.
And, and if we go sometimes three weeks between a meeting, though, and let's say Vance has a really good, I'm not picking on you Vance, a candidate with backgrounds variance from a different county moving up here. And it's in his budget, he should have every right to make that employee an offer. And then he could bring that employee in afterwards.
If it's already in their.
I don't want, yeah, I don't want it holding up hiring by no means.
I think especially, I mean, all positions are essential, but I think especially for essential positions like our police force.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, yeah, we can't be holding up, but other, other situations, I think Darling's going to get into that in a minute. We certainly want to be able to.
You get a good candidate, we have to scoop him up. Well, I don't mean it, well, I do.
Yeah, well, maybe we have to have a special meeting, but we need, I mean, we're pinching pennies.
I mean, well, if it's in their budget and everything, I'm saying.
Budget, then that's in their budget. But if, but say we, for example, we lose somebody, like there were some positions that were filled last year that we'd lost. And then they, so, and I thought there was a hiring freeze on and we still continued to hire them. What positions were those for?
We did not have a hiring freeze on. It was simply they were not allowed to hire anybody outside of their budgeted. So no new positions were allowed to be.
Created.
Okay, we just, it seems that we just called it a hiring freeze. What did we call it?
I didn't call it anything. The board commissioners last year, yeah.
I'm sorry?
It was worded as something about a unit. I, I don't have the correct wording on it, but that's basically what it was, that no new positions could be created as long as it was already within their budgeted approval, then they were allowed to replace those.
If a new position is created, does it not have to come to the board?
That's because it would, it would change the budget. So the way that wage and salary is, if there is a new position that would like to be requested, the information goes through to wage and salary with a total job description so that then the board can have that information of what would a total wage look like? What's the benefit package? So they place it within the wage scales. And then that it's presented to the Board of Commissioners for approval or disapproval.
Then we have done that before.
Yes, you've done approvals and disprovals. Yes, they're the years.
Any other discussion regarding this? Yes, sir.
Should never be this board's. We should never get involved in department heads decision who they're going to hire. It's within their budget. This board should never, ever get involved in who's going to get hired. If Michelle has a person she wants to hire, it's Michelle's department. She should have full reach to do her job. She'd never limit a department head to do their job, ever.
I agree. Yep.
Any other discussion? As we're saying, we'll meet at 10 a.m. For the Commissioners Meeting, today is November 22nd, 2023. Please stand for the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call, please.
Ostrigan. Sensor.
Here.
Wolfson. Milburn.
Here. Russell.
Okay, number four is 2023 Ross Common County Person of the Year. Do we have Chuck in here? Would you like to come up here, please?
Want to adopt the resolution first?
Okay.
Leave me to read it.
Yes.
Move to adopt resolution number 2023-11-01, naming Chuck Corwin as Ross Common County's 2023 Person of the Year. Resolution number 2023-11-01, resolution of tribute for Ross Common County Person of the Year 2023. Whereas Chuck Corwin, a resident of Ross Common County, along with his wife Ruth of 50 years, is an active and involved resident volunteering for his community and beyond for many years. And whereas Mr. Corwin currently is serving as Secretary for the Ross Common County Commission on Aging and has since 2013 volunteered over 30 hours a week as the resident RN consultant, contributing to the betterment and health of countless citizens in Ross Common County and is extremely instrumental in the Holton Lake Global Methodist Church through committee involvement and volunteering with such activities as food drives for the less fortunate and helping veterans. And whereas Mr. Corwin over the last 10 years has volunteered for several humanitarian missions in support of, is it Manos Juntos? Rio Bravo, Mexico, helping to build homes and putting his medical skills into practice at the Mexican Medical Clinic. And whereas additionally, because of Mr. Corwin's outstanding and unselfish service to others, Mr. Corwin has been recognized and awarded the prestigious President of the United States Silver Volunteer Service Award three times and was recognized with the Volunteer Service Award from the Retired Senior Volunteer Program Project Director. And whereas Mr. Corwin represents Ross Common County as a board member on the Northeast Michigan Community Service Agency and is on the Board of Directors at the Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency, is on the State Advisory Council on Aging, serving as a long-term care volunteer ombudsman for Region Nine, volunteers as a safe talk trainer for suicide intervention, served as an onsite clinical consultant for the children's bereavement camp, is involved with older Michigan days in Lansing and was runner up for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Claude Pepper Award for Volunteers. Now therefore be it resolved in recognition of Chuck Corwin's passionate volunteering, tenacious spirit, inexhaustible energy along with his expertise bringing clarity and value to every task and his extreme empathy and compassion for others and his humanitarian achievements. Mr. Chuck Corwin is hereby acknowledged, awarded and bestowed as Ross Common County's Person of the Year Award for 2023.
This chairman would pleasure.
Okay. Any discussion? Clear call roll, please.
Sensor.
Yes.
Ostrigan.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
I want you to get the board up here.
Sounds like we should call a doctor for this.
No, I'm a registered nurse. Obviously, I'm honored by this recognition from the commission. But what I'm doing, going to continue to do as long as I can, is very self-serving. People who retire and just sit around and wait for the end, the end comes quickly. Oh, I'm staying active, trying to stay sharp, paying the community back so that my end doesn't come. We'll continue to do this until I'm old home.
We're going to take a photo. Can I come up, please?
Your, your charter. Where do you want to go by?
See if we can get Chris to take a photo right there and hold it behind the flag.
Do you want to direct us where we?
That's fine. You can just. Eric.
On behalf of the county, it's truly an honor, a privilege and a joy to award this to Mr. Corwin and to his wife Ruth.
I'm sure.
Ready? All right, ready?
Thank you, Charlie. Mark would like a five-minute break.
We have the people, if they want to leave.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess.
Just had a break.
Well, if you want to leave.
Let's move back to order. Approval of the agenda.
What makes you care?
Second.
I have, I have a couple of slides. I want to make sure we get in there.
Yes.
And the first one, I just wanted, I thought we were going to handle this.
That's where it's going to be placed. Any other discussion?
Who was the second?
There's only one.
Had Milburn estimated the motion. Who was the second?
Oh, that was the second. I'm sorry. Discussion anymore? Clear call roll, please.
Wolfson. Sensor.
Yes.
Ostrigan. Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approval of the minutes for 11/8 of 2023, regular meeting.
So moved.
Discussion? Okay.
Um, when do we get the minutes for the last meeting?
For the 15th at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? Clear call roll, please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Ostrigan.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Sensor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number seven, public comment. Under Sheriff. Please turn your mic on and identify yourself.
Under Sheriff Ben Low. I'll be quick. Like Jody referred to in the work session, we do have a candidate in line from West Branch, a wonderful young man. He is a former student of mine and of Sheriff Stern's. He was employed with the Oakmont County Sheriff's Office and was laid off during their financial crisis down there. He comes with wonderful recommendations from that agency. And we are just seeking permission from you guys to offer him a chance at employment at, as road patrol, hopefully this afternoon.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions?
Does that job require him to move into the county or not?
No, we used to have residency requirements years ago, but we did get away with those ones. That, that'll be his decision whether he wants to stay there or move up here. I think it's a good opportunity for us to fill one of our open positions with a local kid who I think is going to do a good job for us.
Not too many counties require that now.
Anything else?
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, let's move to number eight Administrator Controller Report.
I did send you guys out a outline to attach with a packet for the November 17th, today's meeting, which is actually the 22nd, so I'm behind. Probably the most important thing is there was a status conference hearing on November 16th in regards to Chill versus Ross Common County. Commissioner Ostrigan was there. And I would say of that, the most exciting, is that a good word? Thing is, yep, that both sides have agreed per the request of the board that we would be interested in attending mediation. I think the hardest part of that is going to be finding a mediator that's knowledgeable in the subject matter. Judge Bennett made the comment that pretty much so every attorney that might be knowledgeable has touched this at some point. So that will be a recommendation that had been asked for to come from Judge Bennett. And I believe both attorneys will be looking at that as well. So as that comes more near, we will bring in our attorney to speak with the board about that, that process and provide him with instructions moving forward.
I'd like, I'd like to add something to that and, and say that I am also happy that we're coming to this mediation. The other side of the issue, the folks from Chill wanted mediation from the get-go and in fact, we asked for it. And your attorney sought to say no. So we had to go through this whole process the last four years. We get to this point now and we're really at the, just the starting block. And I think at the starting gates, I think that's one of the things that was mentioned.
New board, new direction.
There you go. We're moving in the right direction. That's all I can say.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question on that subject? Um, is a mediator a professional mediator?
So traditionally, in this case, they would try to find an attorney. So traditionally, in this case, they would try to find an attorney, and I do believe Commissioner Ostrugren can correct me if I'm not a hundred percent correct, that has the mediator training and background to come to some kind of a compromise. I think what's really important is a person that understands lake level needs and the laws associated, because you don't want to throw a mediator in there that knows absolutely nothing about the subject matter, especially with this.
My attorney recommended that we get someone like-minded of the judge, so they are all on the same wavelength.
And the cost will be borne by both parties?
That has not been determined yet. Costs, yeah.
It's gonna be a lot less expensive than continuing.
No, I'm saying the cost of the mediator, is that borne by both parties?
So that would not be something that would be determined until the end of that process, that would be something that would come later on, and that's kind of the second portion of this, mediator or not, obviously in this case, there have been damages that have been asked for. Attorney Ellison did mention that he was interested in considering a class action suit, which means they'd have to narrow their scope of whom would be eligible to apply for the class action suit, what those type of damages would look like, how you would determine what was damages. So of that, that kind of goes to that whole monetary determination. The issue that also brought us in was in a request to a jury trial, and essentially, it's, I for Kate is the fancy word, but essentially what they would do is say, okay, the mediation portion or the trial portion would be done through judge, but there could be a potential to then have a jury that would oversee and suggest on damages, or what the award of damages would be for that, so we don't know the answer.
And we also, to make this a lot easier, we're also looking to talk about what they call nominal damages, which means it's just basically an admission that the county was wrong, and moving forward is what is important, as opposed to damages in arrears. So I think that that's a pretty important aspect. I think the people that are involved in this aren't interested in money as much as they are in getting the problem fixed and the continuing fix on the Higgins Lake Dam.
No moves on any of the additional, no updates on any of the additional lawsuits that still stand. Holton Lake is obviously Chase's now, I just wore that, sent him an email that he will reach out and make contact on in regards to the easement for Holton Lake. So I have tried to make sure since I've been back that anything that was in my inbox relative to that was provided to Mr. Shepke for the purposes, and have asked that he be included now on all of those additional emails that come through, since obviously that is per view officially. So that being said, special assessment projects, like St. Helen, hearing date is December fifteenth. Obviously, the LLCS is completely open in an attempt to potentially attain winter level. I know that Commissioner Wolfson, and we had discussed the fact that it's kind of stagnated on where it's going. Additionally, I'm serving as a delegated authority still for Lake St. Helen, and in speaking with Commissioner Wolfson, who obviously represents that area, we will be looking at the potential for an Eagle grant. I will tell you that most of the grants in the last two cycles that have gone through have been for removal of lake level control structures, or larger amounts to refab ones that are considered to be high risk. Our lake level control structures are a one on a scale of one to ten, as far as risk, but I will move forward with that, and then I do believe that Mr. Shepke will be looking at Holton Lake as well, and the potential, if that is something the board would so like him to do. You did, I'm sure you have seen that the state minimum wage increase has gone up as of January first, it will go to ten thirty-three per hour. The good news is, as I provided to you, we start well above that, so it's not one of those cases where we're going to have employees that are scrambling, we start about sixteen percent above. Our lowest starting wage is twelve dollars and thirty-one cents per hour. We also have the twenty bills that are sitting on the governor's desk for juvenile justice reform. Some of them are positive, some of them are negative for us, some of them do nothing but handcuff the local court in regards to best practices that the state has decided at a state level would be relevant to each. We do not know what kind of fiscal impact these changes will have on us, until they are signed by the governor and then hold out to our juvenile court. We don't have that data, as far as are there new requirements, as far as maybe every child ABCD that enters the court has to be mentally screened, or those types of things. So we will see where that brings us, probably another six months before that actually gets to a place where they start to implement that. Most heartfelt to the board, because each of you in some way reach out to me, to all of the employees in the county, and to numerous residents that I run into here, just thank you, thank you for your kind words, for the loss of my family, for reaching out, for taking over, for being in charge, and making it easy for me to be there. I know there were, you know, words of prayer asked on churches, there were, you know, cards, donations for flights, those types of things, but I just really, I really appreciate that. It's a good family here. That being said, I have spent the last week and a half really catching up from that bereavement family leave that I was on. I spent a lot of time communicating with the individual commissioners, and elected heads and department heads in regarding the 2024 budget and the goals of the commissioners to ensure that there was a minimum fifteen percent fund balance, just trying to make sure that the information that the commissioners were lacking in my absence was provided for good decision-making on your parts, and making sure then that the department heads understood that it is a fiscal goal that you are trying to obtain, and that is where your strategic focus has been on 2024 as well. Obviously, I spent time making your board directed, I will, next time, if there are other changes in the future, only do PDF and not print it unless you ask me for it, so that way we can make sure that that is taken care of. The General Appropriations Act is what I have provided to you, as I said, that's required under the Uniform Budget and Accounting Act, so please read that over, let me know if you have any questions prior to it going into the packet. The General Appropriations Act is, again, mandate to approve the budget, and it mirrors what is in the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act that the state has implemented under statute. I sent an email out to all of you in regards to a courthouse security meeting that had occurred, in discussions of one entrance for all, all through security screening. Sheriff Stern will actually be on in your next work session, two weeks, three weeks, to present his recommendations and suggestions for the board's consideration of that. A part of that is simply needing some sort of a good policy in place that gets rolled out to all, everybody that receives a security card access, so that they are aware of any protocols, procedures that, hey, if you violate this, then you risk being treated like the rest of the general public because you've put safety at risk. That is not something that has been in place, so we will work on that as well. Open enrollment was completed, thank you so much to Noel, and appreciate her greatly for that, and then I came back to a pile of FOIA requests. Anytime that you mention Higgins Lake in a meeting, I get about three, so it seems to work that way.
Thank you, Jody. Number nine, correspondence, we have A through G. We have A through G. Number ten, we have monthly department reports of Roscommon County, October 2023 sheriff's activity report. Number eleven, visitors, do we have any visitors? Okay, unfinished new business. Number twelve, Holton Lake Control Structure.
Yes, can I start, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Thank you very much. That's some information to pass out here.
Thank you very much, I appreciate this time. In the budget meeting last week, there were some observations from our department heads about how we're spending so much time on the lake level issues and not concentrating on other areas of the budget, and I want to comment on that, before I get started on Holton Lake. First of all, I believe we can all walk and chew gum at the same time. The budget problems we currently face have been accumulating for a long time. Additionally, the Higgins Lake level issue, which has been a major point of contention, and taken so much of our time, would never have happened if the previous board would have done their job as the Court of Appeals, and ruled, and is confirmed by the Michigan Supreme Court. The prior board has put us in a deep hole. Additionally, the previous board passed two resolutions to create new special assessment districts on Lake St. Helen's and Higgins that were not needed at the time, in their last meeting of their last term, in the last minutes, and our lakes should have been dealt with one at a time. These actions have also put us behind the eight ball. I made a motion earlier this year to stop the Higgins Lake SAD process and work on it after Holton and Lake St. Helen were completed, since we're in the middle of litigation on Higgins, which would have given us more time to work on other issues, and Commissioner Milburn supported that motion, but it did not pass. I've said from the start of this administration that we should never have done the special assessment districts on all three lakes at the same time. The Holton Lake Dam has been disrepair for years, and certainly needs to be done. However, all of our lakes should have been handled one at a time, so we would learn from each one as we went along. Instead, a political decision was made, and a greedy attorney convinced this board to them all at once, at great expense to the county, when we don't have the money. Now, we're in the middle of a budget crisis, partially because of the decisions of the past board, to do all the special assessment districts at the same time. This has taken a lot of time and takes taxpayer money for the board to deal with, and it was the prior board that foisted this responsibility on the new board in their last meeting of their term. Commissioner Censor and I were talking last week, and she suggested to me that next year, anything to do with the Roscommon Lakes be handled in special meetings, separate from our regular meetings. I agree. I would suggest that we have these separate meetings immediately following a short break of our regular meeting. That way, our audio visual crew would already be set up, saving us money. Now here's what I want to talk about today, and that's Holton Lake. I want to start out with a couple of questions. Is this commission going to provide transparency to the public, or are we going to participate in a cover-up? Being transparent is easy when there's nothing embarrassing or improper going on, but it's a lot more difficult when it is. And do we have equal justice under the law here in Roscommon or not? I constantly hear about transparency from our board members. Let's see if everybody really means it. We've got a problem on Holton Lake. During our commissioners meeting on March twenty-two, twenty-three, at about twenty minutes, twenty-five seconds into the meeting, our special assessment district attorney, Stacy Hisong, was asked the following. Can the lake level control structure be modified by the DNR without permission from Eagle, and can the county modify the lake level control structure? Her answer was, the county is the only entity that can make modifications to the water level control structure itself, and any modifications to the water level control structure would need a permit from Eagle. Then a follow-up question was asked, saying, okay, the county would have to get a permit from Eagle? Stacy Hisong's answer was, yes. I think everybody remembers what happened later in that meeting regarding the illegal activity that took place back in November of 2014, when the rocks were illegally removed from the dam on Higgins by the previous commission under the direction of the DNR. The rock removal was against the law, and it affected the levels of Higgins, which was illegal, according to the statute, that we just prosecuted one of our other board members under. Anyway, to fast forward to the present, last week, all the commissioners received a report from our new delegated authority on Holton Lake, Shepke Consulting, and in the report, it was discovered that an illegal steel plate measuring five foot by nineteen foot was inserted into the dam on Holton. I provided a photo of that steel plate that I just passed around, and five foot by nineteen foot is thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty square inches of steel plate blocking the exit of Holton Lake. Apparently, the steel plate has been illegally installed for a considerable period of time, upwards of a year, well after the last permit expired, and it was supposed to be removed. Did the steel plate affect the levels on Holton Lake? Of course it did, and the people who inserted the steel plate broke the law. In comparison, the space blocking the exit of Higgins Lake for only three days this past January was a six-inch by four-point-seven-five-foot wooden stop log, which is only three-hundred-and-forty-two square inches. That's four thousand percent more before more blockage on Holton in comparison to the stop log that was inserted on Higgins. In other words, the illegal steel plate, still in place, is still, is forty times the size of the small stock log that was installed on the Higgins Lake Dam for only three days. Is the current steel plate illegal? Yes, it's illegal, because it affects the levels on Holton Lake. There's no permit in effect at the present time, and there hasn't been for over a year. Let's look at what the expired permit says, because what is currently installed on Holton wouldn't be legal even if the expired permit were extended and in effect, that's very important to remember. First of all, the permit expired on September twenty-one, 2022. The expired permit included two steel plates, so the interior of the dam could be inspected, and it was supposed to be a temporary, as defined by the permit itself. Currently, there's only one steel plate, which only holds back water instead of being used for the original purpose of inspecting the internal parts of the dam. Here is what the expired permit covered as authorized activity. I've got the permit right here, and I'm gonna read a couple of highlighted areas. To facilitate inspection of a portion of the Holton Lake structure, install two steel plates, each measuring five foot by nineteen foot, on both the upstream and downside stream, and directly adjacent to the Holton Lake level control structure, to span base four and five of the structure. I'm gonna have to read the whole part that I highlighted here. Let's get into what the rules are, what they're supposed to do. Under number I, permit E shall notify Eagle with the one week of the completion of the activity authorized by this permit by completing and forwarding the attached pre-diss postcard to the office address thereon. K, failure to comply with conditions of this permit may subject the permit E to revocation of the permit and criminal and/or civil action as cited by the specific state act, federal act, and any rule under this permit is granted. O, non-compliance with these terms and conditions, and/or the initiation of other regulated activities not specifically authorized, shall be caused for the modification, suspension, or revocation of this permit in whole or in part. Further, Eagle may initiate criminal and/or civil proceedings, as may be deemed necessary to correct project deficiencies, protect natural resource values, and secure compliance with statutes. E, if any change or deviation from the permitted activity becomes necessary, the permit E shall request in writing a revision of the permitted activity from Eagle. Such revision requests shall include complete documentation supporting the modification and revised plans detailing the proposed modification. Proposed modifications must be approved in writing by Eagle prior to being implemented. R, prior to initiated permitted construction, the permit E is required to provide a copy of the permit to the contractors for review. The property owner, contractors, and any agent involved in exercising the permit are held responsible to ensure that the project is constructed in accordance with all the drawings and specifications. The contractor is required to provide a copy of the permit to all subcontractors doing work authorized by the permit. Number three, below Y. Only a couple more here. Prior to initiating permitted construction, the permit E is required to provide a copy of this permit to the contractors for review, the property owner, contractors, and any agent involved in exercising the permit are held responsible to ensure that the project is constructed in accordance with all the drawings and specifications. The contractor is required to provide a copy of the permit to all subcontractors doing work by the permit. Thirteen, the permit placard shall be kept posted on Thirteen, "The permit placard shall be kept posted on the worksite in a prominent location at all times for the duration of the project or until the permit is expired." In the last part of the permit, it says, "A permit for temporary work is being issued for one year beyond the previous expiration date, which was the year before. If the project is not completed on the expiration date, the permitee must request an extension with justification in writing to Teresa Sherwood, Eagle, R and D, Miss..." Okay? And on the last page that I provided, for any questions on this proposal, we need to contact Jim Forath. Okay. It looks like it would be a violation of the permit even if it were in effect, and someone has illegally reinstalled one of the steel plates to be used for the water retention, for water retention instead of what the original permit, expired permit, allowed for. Does that affect the levels on Holton Lake? It did, of course. This is serious business. The permit has expired, and the steel plate isn't being used as designed. Does that affect the levels on Holton Lake? Of course it does. Is there anything we have in writing about modifying the dam on Holton as specified in the permit provision P that I read earlier? Any extensions or revision needs to be in writing. Is there an email, a letter, or anything giving anyone permission to insert a steel plate? If not, the steel plate is illegally there. We need to find out who is responsible for this illegal activity and make no mistake about it. It was, and it continues to be illegal, and it hasn't been there for just three days, and it isn't a dinky little six-inch by 4.75 stop log. It's a five-foot by 19-foot steel plate that weighs 5,000 pounds, from what I understand. Did our delegated authority at the time authorize the steel plate on Holton Lake? Did any one of our commissioners, including our chair, know anything about the illegal installation or authorize this activity? Who did the work, and what will the work orders reveal, and did any of our commissioners order that work be done? I noticed that Jim Forath, who was named in the original permit, removed and installed the steel plate originally. If he did work on reinstalling the steel plate, we need to find out who ordered him to reinstall the steel plate. We need to look at the work orders. How many times were the steel plates installed and removed, and what did it cost? I understand that the steel plate is quite heavy and would require heavy equipment to lift it in place. Who paid for the installation, and how much did the county pay for the installation? As a commission, we don't have a written permit modification on file, and it hasn't been posted at the dam site. All of us are legally exposed for violations of some serious criminal statutes. If anyone on Holden Lake wanted to sue us for this violation, they could. Stacy Hisong told us they could. If any of our commissioners know anything about the steel plate that was reinstalled on Holton without specific written permission from Eagle, and I'm not talking about a wink and a nod, it needs to be in writing. They need to come clean right now, so the rest of us can distance ourselves from this criminal activity. The permit is very clear regarding its purpose, and we, as a commission, are in violation of the law. The violations need to be investigated. Who's going to investigate? We certainly can't investigate ourselves. In the most recent case that took place last January, it looks like the Attorney General got involved. Certainly, this case is much more egregious. 4,000% more blockage, changing the levels on Holton Lake, and we've been in violation for over a year or 100 times longer than what happened last January 3. This needs to be investigated by the correct legal authority, and we need to contact them immediately. If we don't, we'll all be accused of a cover-up. Additionally, all the participants involved that knew about the steel plate or helped install it need to be prosecuted to the full extent of the law, just as one of our commissioners was earlier this year. We need to show the citizens of Roscommon that we don't have two justice systems here in Roscommon. Just as we say in the Pledge of Allegiance at every meeting, "With liberty and justice for all," either we all believe it, or we don't, or we're just saying empty words. And as I mentioned at the beginning, if we believe in transparency, or are those just empty words as well. Later in this meeting, I'm going to make a motion for us to ask the state police to investigate this crime and bring their findings up with the prosecutor. I hope I get support. If we don't report this crime, I believe this board may be accused of a cover-up and could actually be implicated in the crime. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes. Would the chair come forth with any information he has on the subject?
At the time, yes, I will, if he's going to call for an investigation.
Does the chair know anything right now?
Like I just said, you're in a call for an investigation. They'll investigate all of us. And that's the proper way of doing it.
That's fair.
Any other discussion? Yep. Okay. Oh, yours.
Under new business.
Okay.
So, I've talked about the workers' compensation fund, and I attended that meeting back on November 1. Basically, they paid back $3.9 million in premiums through 108 municipal entities that they serve. Out of the 108 entities, only 21 of them received checks that were larger than the one that Roscommon County is about to receive. The checks based on premiums that were paid in and the amount of claims that we had throughout the year. I will give this to our controller.
You've been keeping me in suspense.
The amount of the check was $65,799.
Nice. Thank you. Okay, any other new or unfinished business? Yes.
First of all, the survey's been done on Higgins Lake, and it was paid for with private funds. I would like permission by this board to have a letter of appreciation drafted for the people involved in that, so we can present it to them at a future board meeting.
Sounds good.
Also, when we hired the delegated authority, it is in his job description to report to the board, not to any individual board member. I think we all need to keep that in mind. I think that's it.
Okay. That being said, let's go to motions and resolutions, Michelle.
I have a motion I want to bring up at the end of the regular motions.
Hey, you know, Mark, I need help on this. We can't just be throwing motions out there in the middle of a meeting.
It's allowed forward on rules, Mr. Chair.
If we allow a motion to be brought forward, from here on, we'll always have to allow motions to be brought forward at any commissioner's turn. In other words, if next meeting I decided I want to make a motion that everybody get a black coffee cup, I'll have that privilege because once we've done it once, we do it all the time. My opinion, even though I know Eric brought up a hot topic, it would be unwise for the board, because we called, I know I was here Friday, where Eric was called in regard if there were any motions that he wanted to bring forward. And at that time, I was told that there were no motions forward. Beginning of the meeting, nobody brought any motions as far as what they were going to, because I made approval of the meeting to approve the agenda. It wasn't brought up at that time. But I will lead it to whatever the board chair wants to do, but the bottom line is, if we do this today, from here on forth, we'll have to always do this, because once we all vote once, we have to continue to allow it. It can't just be a hot button issue.
I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
For our rules, and we did do it, Mr. Milburn, at the last meeting, that you were not there. We didn't report the motion at the meeting, and we have to go through a process to bring forward a motion, in that we have to vote on bringing that motion forward. So it's part of our rules. Motions can be brought forward, especially under circumstances.
But we're approving the agenda.
We didn't even go on on Holden Lake.
In the beginning, we're approving the agenda, and now you're just adding stuff where you want in motions.
Mr. Chair, it is provided in our rules that we can do that. Do you want me to look the rule up? I have the rule.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This has been done before in the past?
Yeah, last week.
So that sets precedence? It could be done?
It was done last week.
Or in two weeks.
It was. It was.
If it was done two weeks ago, then you have to allow it today. But then, from here on forth, when somebody makes an approval of the agenda, anybody can make some...
Yeah.
...or delete.
The motion, okay?
And it's not fair to the public, because these are printed, and they're out there. And then halfway through, we could say, you know, "This is the agenda," and the public looks, "Well, we're not going to go to the meeting. There's nothing on this." Wait a minute. Wait, I'm talking. We're not going to go to the board meeting, and halfway through the thing, we could say, "Okay, we're going to give us $50,000 raise since nobody's here," and throw that in there. That's not right.
It's part of...
It's just not right.
I can understand your feelings about that, Mr. Chair, but it is part of our rules. Our rules say we can bring forward a motion if other members...
From now on, let's bring that up before we approve the agenda. That's your hiding stuff. You're sneaking it in there.
Mr. Chair, if it is in our board rules, we have done it in the past, and until we change the board rules, that's what we're working with.
Okay.
I can offer a compromise, Mr. Chair. It does smack of transparency if you bring something up, because I wasn't aware this was going to be talked about today. So what I recommend to the board and to the commissioners, have a special meeting tomorrow. You meet within the parameters of the 18 hours. Meet the opportunity for Open Meetings Act, and that way...
Well, we can't do it tomorrow. It's a holiday.
Friday.
The county's closed on Friday, Monday.
The bottom line is, the public, the public should always have the opportunity to know it's going to be on the agenda, unless something came up that was surprisingly time-sensitive.
This does not affect the public.
This is not time-sensitive.
I'm going to ask our parliamentarian, we have voted, we have done this in the past, it's part of our board rules. I brought forward a motion. If I get support for that motion, then it should be brought forward. This information was just given to us well after the time we could even put it on the agenda, Mr. Chair, so it holds it up.
And that's why that stuff should have been discussed in a work session, not in a meeting.
I asked the parliamentarian.
Before, the bottom line is, you're both right, and I hate to sound like that, but you're both right. You do have an opportunity to bring stuff up, but the public has an opportunity to know it's going to be on the agenda. So it's not fair to the public to throw something out there. The kicker is, is my recommendation still stands before the parliamentarian speaks. We should have a meeting on Monday. That way, both answers, both questions and both answers have been addressed. I didn't do that maybe as a draw that I would like to explain it, but...
I agree with that.
I think we need to have a consensus of the board on this, not just one or two board members making a decision, since this is the way it's been done in the past. This is in our board rules. I don't think it's fair to ask the board members to disregard our board rules and make changes to them.
I don't think that's...
I think we should have a vote of the board if we're going to abide by our rules, or we're not.
Well, Darlene's thinking about having a special meeting on Monday anyways, so...
I think it's unnecessary to have a special meeting on Monday.
No, not regarding, something else, too, so we could do both at one special meeting.
Well, you've got to be careful there, Mr. Chair. Special meetings are generally...
Well, we're going to advertise it.
One topic item.
Well, we could add more than one topic long since advertised.
I ask the board to be careful. When you have a special board meeting...
We could put more than one item in for a special meeting.
You can, but the bottom line is, I would be very cautious. When I've done special board meetings in all the years I've been in public service, it's generally one topic only. Be careful in adding too many things on a special board. Then it becomes a regular meeting at a special meeting.
This is a simple motion to contact the state police regarding illegal activity that is ongoing. That's all this is.
You don't even need a motion. You could do it by yourself as a concerned citizen.
I think...
That's what you put in your blog?
I didn't. Where did I put that in my blog?
That state police needs to be contacted, so you could do it as a citizen.
Well, I don't think that has much pull, Mr. Chair, and it is beside the point of what we're talking about here.
Okay.
I think we need to abide by our rules. We either have rules, Mr. Chair, or we don't.
Well, I just don't like it because it's in the middle of a meeting.
You don't like it.
It should have been brought up in the beginning when we approved the agenda. That's all I'm saying. And it should be out there, black and white, for the residents of the county to know what we're voting on. I don't like...
It's going to be out there that we voted on it or not, to contact the state police or not. I mean, this is a very simple motion, Mr. Chair. We either abide by our rules or we don't. We've done it in the past. It's part of our rules. It needs to be brought up, and if somebody wants to complain about it not having foreknowledge, they can look at our film.
For you guys to get done to actually let me speak. So, okay, I'm going to reserve my personal stuff for the public comment. So, yes, you have, yes, you are allowed to bring up a motion. However, how that is clearly needs to be defined in your rules for next year when you approve them, because this is completely unacceptable. And obviously, I just did not do that in public comment, so backtrack. So, it has to be a consensus of the board. How this is presented, want to add a motion, additional motions are allowed to be brought up, the board can vote on it. But you are changing it, and this is a serious issue of contention in these meetings that takes up a lot of unnecessary time. So, we need to get this straightened out for our rules for next year, but you've allowed it. It's in the rules. You don't have anything specific saying that they can't bring up a motion, as practice has been, but it hasn't been put in black and white, which is something that has been brought up before as well. So, the board should vote, yes, is this motion allowed, or no, this motion is not allowed. If you want to take the pressure off of you of making that decision as a chair, let the entire board vote on it.
Okay. I move that we allow the board to vote on this.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
So, from now on, if this motion passes, any motion that is brought forward to the board can be brought up at the last minute, am I correct?
Yes.
With board approval, the majority of board approval.
You've binned your rules in the...
Yeah.
Fixing your rules for 2024.
Oh, no doubt. This is wrong. Your call, Row.
Okay, so what is your actual motion? Is the motion to add? What is your motion? You just said you're making a motion.
I have the motion that I want our board to vote on, is I move to have this board immediately contact the Michigan State Police to investigate the steel plate on Holton Lake and forward that information to the board and the prosecutor.
And your board rules do state that you want to bring motions are supposed to be provided in writing. So, because, you know, that's me. I need to have that in writing. But your original motion is to, a motion to ask the board to allow you to add this motion.
Yes, thank you.
Are we still in discussion now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to vote yes on this motion, the reason being, it was done two weeks ago. We have to allow it go on. We need to fix the board rules in the future. Bottom line is, if we don't vote on it today, it'd look like we're not being transparent. I think it was, I think it was the wrong way to bring it forward. I think it corrupts what we're trying to do here.
It's just like hiding something.
It was the wrong way to bring a motion forward.
We just found out about this information, Mark, late last week.
Again, I...
Why was it...
Way beyond the agenda time.
I feel that it's...
No, you had it prior to that on your blog.
I think it puts, I think it puts the chairman in a very awkward position. If I was the chairman, I would be very upset. That's my thought. I think it puts the chairman in an awkward position.
I'm upset, too.
If he doesn't vote for it, then he looks like he's not being transparent.
Exactly.
So I think it puts the chairman and the entire board in an awkward position. Those are my thoughts. But I'm going to vote yes, because I think it needs to get done. I just think it was...
I definitely want to see it get done, because I know how it's going to turn out. So we're adding number four. There was a motion, I know, motion in the second.
So would you like me to read the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
This is a motion by Ostergrun, second by Wolfson, to add the following motion. I move to have this board immediately contact the Michigan State Police to investigate the steel plate. I move to have this board immediately contact the Michigan State Police to investigate the steel plate on Holton Lake and forward that. Should it be information, not inform?
Yes.
Information. To. Okay, so it's a motion to add the motion.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what you're voting on.
Right.
Russo.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Auburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, let's get back to motion number two. Can you please read it, Michelle?
Move to appoint Daniel Benson to the Roscommon County Veterans Board for a four-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty four, and ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty seven.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Auburn.
Yes.
Yes. Motion number three.
Move to appoint Ray Walensky to the Roundfield Redevelopment Authority for a partial term ending ten thirty one, two thousand twenty four.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
He'll add a lot of quality to the board, Mr. Chair.
Oh, no doubt. Clear call roll, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Auburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes. Motion number four.
Motion to have this board immediately contact the Michigan State Police to investigate the steel plate on Holton Lake and forward that information to the board and prosecutor.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. This may develop into a very serious issue. My information came to me at about six o'clock last night that the chairman called for that plate to be put in.
Interesting, okay.
I'm not an investigative team, but I think this needs to be checked into.
I, I agree.
Thank you. If I may ask, Mr. Wilson, who informed you that the chair asked to have that plate installed?
You don't have to answer that.
The person that installed the plate involved, who committed the call to them.
Okay, and you, and you're not, you can't say who that was?
He doesn't need to.
Well, it's a matter of public record to put it in.
Yeah.
And pour out.
Okay. I mean, he was the original contractor. I didn't know if he reinstalls it after, after the fact.
You know, if, if that plate was left in from this previous permit, then that's a violation of the permit. If that plate was taken out and then put back in without a permit, that's a whole new ballgame.
Are you saying it was taken out and then put back in?
It was not there this spring.
It's in there now, as, as the photographs, just, just. Okay.
This is funny. Okay, we got motion in the second. Any other discussion? Clear call roll.
Auburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, committee reports, Rox.
Um, I think the government is using that, using that, using that every place. During the process of training, it's the township to a few weeks.
Per household, charge on the people's tax bills so that they can hold this event twice a year in the future. If we don't succeed in that, then it's probably going to be down to one event, and the problem we run into that is you know, we have to pay by the pound for a lot of this stuff to get rid of, and we're going to have more poundage at one event than if we had two events in each individual. In other words, people are going to stockpile this stuff and bring it. We may run out of funds even for one event in the near future. So we're going around the townships and asking for support on increasing by fifty cents a household to cover the cost of this.
Anything else? L A P C, were you able to attend that? Important meeting. Darlene?
I had none.
Hey, Mark, oh, you're out of the country.
He's way south.
Anything on Eric?
Yes, I do. Uh, I wasn't able to attend the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Association meeting because we had the hearing going on, uh, on the Higgins Lake uh, level issues last Thursday, but I did follow up with the call to Ben, the chairman, and he, uh, you know, he notified me of a few things. There's a lot of stuff going on there, as I mentioned in the last report that I had, and I, I was able to talk to Ben a little bit about it also. That going on. Uh, the other committee report on the, on our lake levels, Higgins is currently at four point eight one gauge, which is point seven two inches below the maximum winter drawdown. We're currently out of compliance with the court order. Last year on this, on this date, we were four point, uh, the gauge was four point seven two instead of four point eight one, so it was even lower last year. Uh, Holden Lake, we're at eight point zero six gauge or four point nine two inches above the maximum winter drawdown, and we are in compliance with the court order. Lake St. Helen, eight point one two gauge or four point five six inches above the maximum winter drawdown, and we are in compliance with that court order as well. The only lake we're not in compliance with is Higgins Lake.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I had an agenda meeting. That's it. It was late week. Public comment. Yes, sir. Turn your mic on and identify yourself, please.
Someone already turned it on for me. My name's Jeffrey Max LaVoy. I'm, live on seven four eight zero Emery Road, uh, here for the Emery Road Project against Consumers Energy. First of all, I've had a lot of comments from people I've talked to on Emery Road, and I want to personally tell you thank you for your resolution. We greatly appreciate it. And since that's happened, um, we had, uh, I've been summoned by Consumers Energy lawyers. Uh, they, I wouldn't allow them to come on, come on the property and survey the property. Reason for that is that I don't want them going through my property, so they shouldn't need to come on my property survey. But state laws, Michigan laws, I can't stop that, so I was, I got a subpoena for it, and there were seventeen of us. Okay, this is after, this is after, um, Roscommon Township put a resolution to them. This is after you guys doing it. What we got next is we had a meeting, uh, excuse me, the other day, and, uh, we are going to go to Denton Township because we, we've got residents that live, you know, there's a breaking road, there's, I'm for Roscommon, Denton Township, it goes, it goes through Denton Township, and I had residents in Denton Township that wants us to come to a Denton Township meeting and present the same thing we presented to Roscommon and to present to you, and we agreed to it, of course, because it's our road. It's, it's everybody's road there, and that's, the majority of the people on that road does not want this to happen. Um, we also have a meeting in, in that, oh, that meeting is at, on the sixth of December, uh, at four o'clock in Denton Township Hall, and, uh, we're going to be there representing Denton Township residents in Roscommon, yeah, because we're one family. And then we have a town meeting in Roscommon Township for everybody that lives on Emery Road. It's on, uh, December ninth at one P M, and we are having the lawyers there. And the lawyers are going to discuss what our rights are and what we can expect if they pursue this. Um, they're still pursuing it. They're still sending out people out to people and offering more money now. We're, we're getting, we're getting a little higher now, but, uh, but, you know, the thing is, I, I, I have a big problem with it, and I got a handout from Consumers Energy, uh, our Sherry McGee, she's great at researching, getting things, and this is a handout from Van Burn County. They were fighting Consumers Energy for coming down there, and they won, and they going to move the line. And that's the same principle we're trying to do, is we want them to move the line. We are not against upgrading Consumers Energy power. We want, we just don't want them coming down Emery Road and destroying the road and destroying all the personal property. There is, if you look at a map, there's other routes they could be taking. And that domain does not work as long as they got another route. But we're, we're expecting to be sued by Consumers Energy. They're not taking, you know, they're not backing down at all. They are actually telling people, a bunch of fibs, okay, they want, they want to put their, mix up their low voltage. That's fine and dandy. It's been there since the last time Larry's here, nineteen forty, when they put this in. They can put the low voltage underground. My property, my, all my voltage, all my electricity is underground. They could do that with a low voltage down there, Emery Road. We don't care. You know, they'll get rid of the poles out in there. They'll be able to, but the high voltage can go somewhere else. And I'm, I'm just, well, I was asked to ask the board, is there any fundings in Roscommon Township that will help us out as taxpayers, citizens, landowners, that could help us with funding in case we get this far? What I can't understand is how a big corporate like, and Consumers Energy, because they're a multi-billion corporate, can come in and tell townships, counties, they're going to come down there no matter what. When I dig a hole in my yard and put fence up, I got to go to my township and get a permit. So the consumer power comes in and puts poles in, isn't, don't they have to run the same permits? Okay, if Roscommon already said no, why are they even coming down our road? There is, there's other ways just to make it easy and convenient for them. Okay, I was coming here, I went by the eighteen substation. If you look down, if you go down a road, hmm, they'll go over wetlands. They've been going over wetlands for years. Why is this a big issue? They are, they could go on property that isn't being used. I heard they can't go down state property. It's a federal law now. I think that's a big farce, because why would the state give them a hundred some million dollars for infrastructure upgrade and not let them on their, not let them run some lines down their, down the land? It just don't make sense. They're logging it all off. So I'm, my, I guess I'm here for representing Emery Road. That's, that's what I'm here for. And we got, we got people that are very concerned. We got, we got people that are having health issues. We got some elderly people that this is making them sick. They lose sleep, they're going to lose their whole life. Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I got this handout of you.
Mr. Chair, I ask permission of the chair to ask just a couple of quick questions.
Uh, normally we don't ask questions in public comment. Thank you.
Could you stay afterwards?
Yes, I will.
Yeah. Any other public comment?
Yes.
Good morning. Julie Darden, MSU Extension. Um, I wanted to come today, uh, to share some information. Firstly, um, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am very grateful for the work that I do and the ability of our, the work of MSU Extension to positively impact the lives of people in the communities that we serve. And we're really proud of the work that we do to serve people, um, across the state and, you know, right here in Roscommon County. One of the things that I know that we share in common, um, is the desire to serve the public and to serve them in ways that helps them improve their lives. In addition to that, uh, I was really touched by the work of, of the Citizen of the Year, Mr. Mr. Corwin, um, and the words that he shared when he accepted, uh, that honor at the beginning of the meeting. He talked about volunteerism, um, and he talked about staying active in your community. These are things that we absolutely support, so if anyone who is listening to that is thinking, how could I get involved in my community? MSU Extension has a lot of ways that help people get involved in their community if there's not already a need. But I think there's a real need across all of Michigan for people who want to serve their community to get involved and get active. One of the things that's on your agenda today is, uh, correspondence from MSU Extension called Report to Partners, and that really is what we consider our county governments as our partners in this work and the work that we do. And so in light of that partnership, um, you know, we've, we've been able to bridge, uh, through twenty twenty three funding that, um, that was cut from, and understandably, uh, you're facing, uh, an unprecedented fiscal situation. And we want to be good fiscal stewards too. So the budget line item from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, we received about one percent of what we received in twenty twenty two, which is, you know, we, we went into this year knowing that that's what we were going to get. That funding for those same areas is continuing into twenty twenty four, and it's about nine, it's just under two thousand dollars. When I look at the investment that the university and the College of Agriculture and Natural Resources is making here in Roscommon County, it exceeds a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and that's just in terms of staff support. That doesn't count their, the staff's benefits. That's just salary. That's just salary money of people whose work touches Roscommon County. Um, it doesn't include things that we pay for out of our own pocket. So I know, and I've heard that you're looking for every dime, you know, you're, you're shaking the pockets, you're, you're going in the couch cushions. You're looking at every single thing, and I applaud that, um, and that stewardship, uh, to continue. But I just want to give you that perspective that, um, you know, what you're contributing to our work beyond the space that you're contributing is about one percent, and that's just personnel. So when we talk about the investment in the partnership that we're making, you know, that small amount does make a difference to us. We're talking about our phone systems, and that's how we communicate with the public. You're talking about our copier, and that also is a way that we communicate to the public. You know, those are things that we use, uh, to, to get the word out about our worthy programs and our valuable programs. And I certainly understand that we often have a lot of things that we want, and then we have the group of things we can afford. And I also know that there are a lot of things you'd love to fund, and then there are the things you have to fund, and we certainly understand that. So beyond this ask about this, about two thousand dollars, um, I would like to ask, uh, members of the board to, um, entertain my queries and phone calls as I think about how we can be in, included in budgets or find funding for twenty twenty four. We'd like to be able to be funded for twenty twenty four. There are a number of mechanisms that we can do to do that. I know that there are a number, again, of things that you have to fund and things you want to fund as you're looking at the twenty twenty four budget. One of those mechanisms is a millage. We do have, uh, dedicated millages in many counties across the state. We could do partnership with other organizations that you've also had to cut, but that you would love to be able to fund. I would like to be able to talk to you all about that, and so, um, I'm, I'm appreciative of the time that you give to this effort. The, the hours that you spend, the special meetings that you have to hold, even on November fifteenth. I, I couldn't even virtually couldn't be here for that entire meeting because of other obligations, but I, I see the work that you're doing, and I am grateful for the work that you're doing as we approach this season of, of gratitude. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Danielle Janice, Court Administrator for the District Court of Roscommon and Overlaw Counties, and I just want to start off with saying, attending last week's meeting virtually frustrated, doesn't even come close, is the word I would use. I'm coming to you not only as a court administrator, but I'm also coming to you as an individual who genuinely cares about her staff. I have a quote in my office, and it says, just because you have the right to do something doesn't mean it's the right thing to do, and I want you all to reflect on that. The right thing is not always the easy thing, and when it comes to public service and employees who genuinely want the best for not only the county but our citizens to take from them in an effort to balance your budget, you're not going to have the workforce that continues to balance your budget. I don't, I can't emphasize, I can't emphasize that. I don't, I can't emphasize, I can't emphasize that enough. You also need to think about what do you want your legacy to be as a county commissioner? Do you want it to be ideally fiscally sound? You want resources to continue to be offered? Do you think that will be accomplished by losing good employees? Either one of those things. In, in honor of it being Thanksgiving Eve, I'll share a story with you. Six years ago, it's four twenty, Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I, I wasn't the court administrator at the time. I was just a magistrate. The phone rang, a woman bawling, absolutely bawling. I couldn't even understand what she was saying. She was a teacher, Southern Michigan, got home, opened the mail. There was a letter from the Secretary of State telling her that her license was suspended for drunk driving in Ross Common County. And she tells me she's never even been to Ross Common County. It is four twenty, Wednesday before a long Thanksgiving weekend. She goes on to tell me that she's supposed to be leaving in a few hours to drive to Ohio to spend Thanksgiving with her family and her father. She was a teacher. She clearly seemed to have some valid points on, on the phone. I ended up staying till seven thirty that night to exhaust every possible option within, within my reach to rectify the situation. It was not her. There was an identity mistake. Was it the court's problem? Was it, was it my job? No, but it was the right thing to do, right? It wasn't the easy thing. I could have clocked out at four thirty and thought, good riddance. That's the Secretary of State. That's the Michigan State Police for giving the wrong information. No, but it wasn't the right thing to do. And without a doubt, my staff today would do the same thing in my absence. There is not a question in my mind. And that's the legacy that I want to leave. So with that, I, I know that the budget wasn't on topic today. I wasn't here to speak last week. I, I just want to emphasize to all of you that I will never stop fighting for my staff ever. I know that, you know, there's been mention that a department head will never come to you and say, give me less money. Well, I voluntarily trim my budget every single year in every other expenditure line item except payroll for my staff. You can look at my history. I also encourage all of you to reach out to other agencies and ask, how is Ross Common performing? All the Supreme Court administrative offices, what do you think about the Ross Common Courts? Call lean, call MSP. What do you think about Ross Common County Sheriff's Department? They, they without a doubt, I don't want you to take my word for it, but they without a doubt will tell you that we are the role models for other counties. And I hope that you guys have the same desire as some of the great department heads that we currently have to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Anybody on Zoom? I was gonna say lean.
Michelle.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Told you.
Looking that way, but I didn't look this way.
Michelle Stevenson, Ross Common County Clerk, Ross Common County resident and registered, by the way. So, yes, um, wow, wow, uh, yeah. You, there's so many times, yes, I'm spending time just sitting here, just, I just, wow. Yeah, we, we sit here and we hear you say that you want to be transparent. Okay, being transparent isn't springing things on the board and then say, oh, well, we're going to pass a motion to do this. It's, you, you know, we, we had the opportunity to talk about this during a public comment or during the work session. And then you could have brought a motion up regarding that at that time. This infighting, when we're trying to get clarification, these board rules, they need to be addressed. And, you know, and that was, it's not the first time. It was a, it was a conversation through, in the beginning of the year, because it was what, the end of February, I think, before we actually even approved the board rules? So, um, you know, I really hope that as much energy that's been spent on some other things that have seemed to be in the top topics for twenty twenty-three. Hopefully some, some of the other things that are very important to everybody that's here that supports the citizens of this county, who provide the services on a daily basis to the citizens of this county. Hopefully you guys can start focusing on that a little bit more. And then just keeping in mind, you know, I'm sure some of you are very familiar with this. When there are subjects of investigations, you don't discuss those if it's going to be something that's going to be investigated. Because, you know, that's going to taint the investigation. So I have so many more things that I could say, but I'm just not even going to. I just hope that you all have a happy Thanksgiving. Remember that the filing deadline for the February presidential primary for proposals is Tuesday, December fifth at four o'clock. So don't come at me at three fifty-seven on that day, please, because, you know, we're trying to get everything done. The ballots have to be to the township clerks by January thirteenth. And we've got Christmas and New Year's. So there's days that are going to be, we're going to be closed. So.
Is that something we bring to you as a board or is that brought by our chair? How, how's that process?
As a board, we have to think.
Yeah, any resolutions, that's you guys already, any resolutions that are going to be on the, on the ballot. That's all I have, even though I still have two minutes, but I'm going to be done. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a public comment. In regards to the elections, I was at a meeting of Richfield Township last night and they brought forth the information about the nine days of voting prior to the election. I think they had a total of thirty-five people that nine days prior to, so, you know, my opinion as a citizen of this county is that's putting a lot of financial hardship on their townships and counties for little value, I see.
Costly.
Yes, thank you.
Please.
So, uh, yes, Ross Common Township did conduct early voting in November. They had thirty-one total. And it was a pilot program and not everybody had to have it. Our entire county did not participate in the election in November. It was half of our county because it was for Houghton Lake Community Schools. Come February, all of the townships will be participating in early voting for the February presidential primary, the August primary and the November general election. They had, there are municipal agreements. Richfield Township will be hosting early voting for Richfield, Osavo, Bacchus and Nester Townships. So all voters will be able to go to Richfield Township Hall and vote for those nine days during those, that nine day period. Markey Township and Lion Township have a municipal agreement. And so Lion Township and Markey Township voters will be able to go to Markey Township Hall and vote there. All other townships will be hosting early voting at their respective locations. Is it extensive expense and financial burden on the townships? Absolutely. It was a decision by the voters of the state of Michigan who voted that to make it part of the Michigan Constitution. So this is one of those things where, you know, you, you're told by the voters, this is what you're going to do. This is what you're going to provide. Figure it out. The state of Michigan is working on, um, they have funding that they're working on providing grant funding for early voting. So how that is working is that the county is the grant administrator for the, for all entities within the county. So all of the funding will come through the county and come, and I'll be the one that has to disperse it. They are funding additional tabulators because each jurisdiction, each voting site has got to have a separate tabulator for early voting. That tabulator cannot be used on election day. It is used for those nine days of early voting, then it is secured until eight o'clock on election night. And at that time, then they can tabulate the votes for that. They have to have a separate laptop for early voting. So that is also something that is being funded by the state. How much actual, and they're also going to fund a ballot on demand system. So we, um, I've requested not their actual ballot on demand system, but a software program that is a separate laptop and printer for each of the early voting sites to where they can utilize that for elections where we have splits. It'll be very handy for elections where we have splits, where we have commissioner split or school split or whatever. And so they can print, um, on the ballot for the express vote equipment that we have, they can put a barcode on there that will bring up a particular ballot for that voter. So there's no confusion. But we requested that and we requested funding for additional bags because they have to secure those ballots every night for each day. They have to secure the equipment. So we put in a request for steel cages for each location that they can put the tabulator into and the laptops and the express votes. Ross Common Township has one of those steel cages and Carrie, Carrie Milburn, the clerk in Ross Common Township, she, her and I sat and we were going back and forth with a lot of ideas and different things. And like, oh, hey, what about this and what about this? And so we, we put together a pretty extensive list. And I think our overall financial request outside of the tabulator and the laptops was about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Will we get that? Don't know. Probably not get all of it, but you don't know if you don't ask. I don't know how much the state, I know they had thirty million. At one point, I don't know if they came up with more. We're a small fish in a big pond. So hopefully we'll get a lot of what we need. The challenge is now, okay, they're trying to determine what they're going to do, when they're going to disperse the, the funds to be able to buy this additional, the additional materials that we need for early voting. Well, we have an election on February twenty-seventh. The, um, early voting begins on February seventeenth. So, uh, you know, we've got a lot of work to do between now and then. And we're kind of at the mercy of the state. And it's like, I've been sitting here trying to decide, do I come to you and say, hey, can we fund maybe this portion of it, knowing that we're going to get reimbursed, but I don't know how much we're going to be reimbursed by the state? So that's where it's kind of like, how do we figure out the best way to do this to make sure that our entities have what they need? That our townships have what they need to provide early voting? You know, do we say, oh, well, it's their problem? I don't feel like that's the best way to deal with it, but, you know, so there's, there's a lot of things going on there with that. So yes, it is a financial hardship and it's, but it's what the voters voted for.
Quick question on something that you said, Michelle. Are they actually going to be having a system that produces the ballots as people come in? So they can, that would be certainly be a way to avoid a lot of printing expense and the possibility of a lot of fraud.
Well, the ballot on demand system is the ability to do that. However.
It is the ability to do that?
Yes, ballot on demand. Yes, there's a lot of changes that are going to be effect, occurring in elections.
I mean, that would certainly help a lot with fraud, I would think.
Not necessarily. So it doesn't necessarily, there's, there's, there's two arguments for it. There's an argument for it and there's an argument against it. So that's a whole other conversation, but.
You're just not going to end up with bundles of ballots that are sitting there ready to be marked up. That's what I'm saying would decrease the, you know, chances for fraud. That's, that's, that was my point.
It depends because you also got to look how much that system costs. Because it's not only the initial purchase, it's the maintenance, the annual maintenance.
If it eliminates, if it eliminates fraud, if it eliminates fraud, I, you know, so what?
You, you can't fund a lot of this stuff now. So how are we going to fund that?
It's the basis of our democracy, fair and equal elections.
Come over, credit system. Just a couple of things. I think it would be, it would be the board to seek more information on the sale of the Kirkland campus by inviting the new owner and the Kirkland Board or representative of the board to come here and explain what has happened, what's the proposed for the site, what's the framework for how long that's going to take. Just think that citizenry would like to know what's going to happen out there and who's going to be housed there. A lot of misinformation, I think, at this point, but it would be who the board, I think, to invite both of those to come here and tell you exactly what's going on and what their timeline is. The other thing was, uh, the Core Chair or Manager, I can't remember what his title is. Lieutenant, that's good. Came here and talked about the new building and process that they're going through up at the Garrett Schools. Are you guys aware of how many different trade areas are being developed and have been built in, in this county and surrounding counties? It's, it's just a ton of information, a ton of expenditures. So that almost it's coming down to each community is developing their own trade center. You remember four or five years ago, I wanted to take the Kirkland Campus and create a trade center and did a hell of a lot of work to try to promote that and get private money and private support. And I was told that it wasn't for sale unless I had six million dollars. Now it turns out to be a third of that to another person for another reason to have it. I'm not suggesting whether it's needed or not needed. A campus that size would certainly have to employ a lot of people. That would be a good thing. Would have to have a lot of residents to afford, you know, there has to be money funded into the, to, to run a two million dollar basic city. There's a city out there, if you haven't been out there in a while, with all the utilities that it needs to run as a city. And, uh, I think it would be who the board to go out and talk to them about that facility and what they're using it for. But also try to get information from CHA, Core, West Branch, I think, has a trade center now. So everybody that, uh, in the four county area that could have been served by a Kirkland Trade Center has decided they're going to do it on their own. And they're spending a hell of a lot of money, taxpayer money, to build these different facilities. And the argument I hear is who wants to sit on a bus, you know, for two or three hours a day going back and forth to a central area, but that's what Kirkland was all about, was building it in the center of the four county area and then servicing the kids in those areas to go to, to go to school. And once that facility moved up to Grayling, it started to sidetrack, I think. It was the Headley stuff. I think you still need to sit down and have a, an open discussion about what you think each one of you would like to to have funded to get the programs back installed that you had to cut years ago. The new members didn't do that, but they're stuck with that now. And if you're going to replace the funding on those programs, you just turned an eloquent speech from MSUE. They came here and said, listen, we'd, we'd like to be funded. Part of that funding went away. The household had its ways. We've got our hand, people have got their hands out now going to each township saying, please support a fifty cent increase on each one of you. Why did they have to do that? It goes back to budget cuts and say, we can afford to fund this. We can't afford to fund that. There's twenty-five thousand dollars over here that we got to cut. Listen, I didn't mean, lastly, happy Thanksgiving, but lastly, I didn't mean to integrate any employee for this town. I think you have hardworking people that come here and they work every day. But you, your responsibility is not to them, sorry, it's to the taxpayers. You're the fiduciary that sits up here and says, what are we going to spend on our money, our money on? What can we afford to spend our money on? And if you make those decisions and say, we are going to carry a fund balance of this minimum amount to make sure that we can cover emergency situations, then that's what you need to do. And it makes tough choices. You can only afford what you can afford. That's what it comes down to. You have money coming in, money going out. There's programs that you want to run. There's people that you want to take care of. I want you to take care of them too. But if you can't afford to do that, then you have to come up with an alternative to that. And I look forward to seeing what your final vote on those cuts are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, look at that.